Is Thursday, January 18th. The meeting start time is 6:00 PM. City Clerk Swanson, can you please do a roll?
Councilmember Slaton.
Here.
Councilmember Perdok.
Here.
Councilmember Kramer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Overton.
Here.
And Mayor Claffey.
Here. If you could all stand for the pledge. Councilmember Slaton, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You please remain standing. Councilmember Perdok, if you could lead us in.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Our kind and gracious God, if you would please join with us humbly and lead us and guide us that we may do the good work for the city of Clearlake. We ask for blessings upon those who are living here and coming to see us as guests. We also ask for blessings upon our wonderful staff, that they will do the right things, serve the public, and make this a better place for each and every one of us. We ask for these things in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
We need to start getting somebody to do that.
Yep.
City Manager Flora, do you have any changes to the agenda?
One change, Mr. Mayor. So, like to pull item number nine. This is related to the freezer unit for the senior center. We're working through some grant requirements on this. There's gonna have to be an adjustment, but we weren't able to get the answers we needed. So that'll come back at a future time.
All right. Thank you. Any changes from the council? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented, minus item number nine of the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Slaton, a second from Councilmember Kramer. All those in favor, please vote online.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. All right. Onto item E, presentations. Number one, presentation of our January adoptable dogs.
Hello, everybody. She's a little shy. This is Emily. She's our adoptable dog of the month. Emily is a one-and-a-half-year-old that really pitched a mix. She's a total love bug and isn't afraid to show it. One of her favorite things to do is snuggles. Emily also enjoys playtime with other dogs and long walks. She's a super silly girl and always finds a way to make you laugh. Emily would enjoy to have a doggy friend in the home, preferably a male. We are unsure of how she is with cats.
The mic is not working.
She's day microchipped, heartworm negative, and up to date on all vaccines. Emily is only one of the many wonderful dogs we have for adoption.
Alan, the mic is not working.
I thought it was on.
Should we start over?
That's okay.
Okay. The shelter is open 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, seven days a week. We're located at 6820 Old Highway 53, and we can't wait to see everybody there.
Thank you. Dan Peterson?
They're great. Good evening, council. So, 25 dogs came into the shelter over this month. Eleven left the shelter, being two rescued, four returned to owner, and one was euthanized as part of those numbers. Currently, we have 52 dogs, including five puppies that's with one of the mothers of that 52. There was a vaccination clinic conducted on January 10th where 37 dogs were served. And just want to let everyone know that there is a free microchip clinic happening on January 24th at our shelter between the hours of 2:00 and 4:00. And so if you have, like any information, you can contact North Bay Animal Services or go on their Facebook app. They have some information.
Wonderful. Any questions for Lieutenant?
I have one, one question. How are, how are our statistics compared to like the county?
Do we have a comparison?
Do you have, do you have a comparison?
I would have to do a request for those to give you the exact numbers, but by understanding, ours are quite different in comparison to their intakes and euthanizations and things.
Okay, thank you. Maybe next time you can provide that for us. Thank you.
I can do an information request.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Turn your mic on.
If I could just add on the numbers from Lake County Animal Care and Control. They post their numbers on their website. They do not have numbers for 2023 yet. They have 2016 through 2022. If they aren't posting the numbers in the next week, we will, we will try and get a hold of those numbers from them so we can report them.
Chief, you said no numbers for 2023 or 2024?
We'll try and get the numbers for 2023.
Okay. They haven't posted all of last year. All right. Thank you. All right. Item number two, Chief, if you could join me up front. Officer Eagle, if you could also join us up front, please.
Right here's good. All right, just to start off, this is Officer Daniel Eagle. He's been with us since January of 2018. He is assigned to patrol. He has some special duties that include field training officer, training of new officers when they're first hired. He's also a canine handler. He's had his dog Zeus for about three years. So now, we have a little information on him. We'll go into what we're here for, what he's up here for tonight. So every year, US Congressman Mike Thompson gives Public Safety Hero Awards to one law enforcement employee and one fire employee in each of the five counties he represents. For Lake County, for 2023, Congressman Thompson selected Officer Eagle for the award. Some of the factors Congressman Thompson considered when picking Officer Eagle for the award are his dedication to the community, his work to address traffic-related issues, speed enforcement, different violations like that, his work doing traffic collision investigations. He's one of our traffic collision investigators in the department to work on the serious and fatal car accidents. And also, one of the other big factors was his receipt of the DUI award from Mothers Against Drunk Driving that he received earlier, or earlier last year in 2023. So, he got this congressional record presented to him on Sunday at a ceremony down in Vallejo with the recipients from the five other counties. Several department members were able to go down there and tend it with him. It was a nice ceremony, and it was good to see him get recognized for his hard work to help make Clearlake a safer community for everyone to visit, work, and live here.
Thank you, Officer Eagle. Thank you, Chief. A fantastic award, emblematic of all the great work our police department and staff are doing here. Quite an honor. Thank you for representing our city well. Thank you, officer. All right. Moving on to item three, a presentation from our Public Works Director on some public works projects here in the city. Director Leva.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight's Public Works presentation is basically an iteration of last year's presentation to remind everybody just what Public Works does and to make sure that everybody knows all the things that happen during the course of a year. Next slide. The Public Works purpose is to advance the life, safety, and general welfare of the public by being effective, efficient, and responsible for planning, engineering, construction, and operation, maintenance of the city's infrastructure, which includes public roads, parks, and storm drain facilities. To provide the city council and public with an overall understanding of the duties and tasks that the Public Works Department accomplishes over the course of the year, Public Works Superintendent Donald "Bo" Weimer is responsible for overseeing and maintaining the Public Works Department equipment and personnel. So he basically takes care of a lot of the stuff that we hand down to him from our global decision-making. So, introduction of the team. I don't have them all here. I have a few guys here. Jose Valencia is our roads lead worker. He is not here tonight. Adam Hernandez is our parks foreman. Want to stand up, Adam? Adam takes care of our parks. He's the foreman for our crew. Tyler Beach, senior maintenance worker. Jose Mendoza, senior maintenance worker. Take a stand. Thank you. Felipe Fernandez, senior maintenance worker. Alex Martinez, also not here, maintenance worker two. Federico Rodriguez, maintenance worker one. Terry Erhart, maintenance worker one. Patrick Porterfield, maintenance worker one, standing in the back. Trevor Ewing, maintenance worker one. Johnny Miskel, maintenance worker one. Also I have here is Bo, our superintendent, takes care of a lot of things for us, gets the guys scheduled out into the field. Next slide. What exactly does Public Works do? They grade and maintain all the city roads. I left this, all of this in here just to, as a reminder of what they do throughout the year. They remove debris from the city streets, canals, and drainages. They clean the city properties from vegetation, fulfill work requests throughout the city. They maintain parks and the senior center, maintenance and installation of street signs, which happens quite a lot because a lot get hit. I would want to say daily or weekly, stop signs come down, street signs come down. They maintain street lights and traffic signals. They support the fire department with traffic control during fires using our water tender. They assist code enforcement on cleanups, support police department with traffic control, provide and support logistics for all city-sponsored events, which includes the Christmas parade, the Fourth of July parade, concerts, and such. Major accomplishments by Public Works this year. Every year, they do grading throughout the city, usually between five and 10 miles a street, of which five miles was in preparation for the 2023 chip seal project. In order to chip seal city gravel roads, it requires the roads to be graded ahead of time. And in preparation for this, it requires basic operations and personnel to transport trailers for equipment, use of the road grader, water truck, tree trimming, use of the roller, traffic control, all which takes about six people just, just to get done. We also don't want to forget about the Parks Department, who takes care of Austin Park, Redbud Park, Highlands Park, and the promenade, getting the parks into better shape with continued care. Attached here is a picture of Adam in the, in the lake. All too often, boats hit the pipes in, in the lake, which break the irrigation pumping to our pipes in the park for air, to our sprinklers, which is a constant battle. They're constantly repairing these pipes several times throughout the summer. Next slide. They take care of drainage and ditch maintenance. Here, this one, I believe, is this on Irving, Bo? Irving, is that Irving?
I believe so.
Yeah. They did a, with our new excavator, they were able to take care of and make a really good, clean section up on Irving with, right there, along with installation of a culvert. Next slide. They also take care of tree trimming, as you can see in our boom truck, and creek cleanup. This year, we had extra crews come in and help our guys with some creek cleanup and storm debris removal through a grant, and they worked with us for around a month, and they got quite a bit done cleaning up previous storm debris. Next slide. They also take care of the constant vandalism and storm cleanup. To the left is what happens to our restrooms very often. They're constantly pulling toilets out, sinks off the wall, graffiti, breaking our lights and such, and so it's constant work for our parks to take care of. Next slide. And here's a little bit more of Public Works in action. During a rain event, they had some culvert work, trying to keep the culverts clear from flooding the roads. We had some washout right there, continued road grading. Here we have, we just started using a new app. It's called Share My Toolbox. The city Public Works Department uses this, a mobile tracking and small tool management system to track, share, and manage tools, ensuring that equipment is available and in use. This is a valuable tool for public work staff, as it saves time for searching for misplaced tools or spending on unnecessary duplicates. It is simple and easy to use, allowing tools to be tracked from person to person. Okay. Here, I left some of the stuff from last year. Our goals from last year are in, here, and this is where we've come from last year. So last year, we wanted to transition to our new yard. We moved into our new yard. We wanted to implement an inventory management system for all equipment and assets. We began using Share My Toolbox. That is, I just want to give credit to Bo because he takes care of a lot of that stuff for us in the background. We wanted to streamline our process for improving day-to-day operations and projects to improve efficiency by giving accountability to our lead positions so that they're able to give direction to the team, stemming a little bit from our HPO training. Develop a matrix for management and measurement of efficiency. That is ongoing online training modules. They're available through Vector Solutions. We also have installed a TV at the Public Works yard so they can do some training online as well. Training for staff to develop necessary skills to keep costs down by doing in-house, work in-house versus outsourcing such as striping. We did do some stuff with the county this year that helped. The guys also did some striping as well. Working with other agencies for shared assets and assistance, citywide striping. They also help with boat repairs, their boat for repairs in the lake. And last but not least, building a coalition between Public Works and City Hall, which is ongoing. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Any questions from the council? All right.
Senior. If I could just briefly say, I couldn't be more proud of Director Leva and the work she's done since she's been Director. I think, you know, we've never had a stronger Public Works team than we do right now, and there's been almost no turnover, which is something that we constantly battled for years in being able to keep our positions filled. And just, as you know, infrastructure investment, the roads network is one of the highest priorities of the council. We've done a phenomenal job over the last few years. We have another huge year ahead of, ahead of us, but just wanted to say extremely proud of Director Leva and staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager.
We are as well.
Thank you all. All right. Director Veramontes, could you meet me up front? There we go. I have a few names here. If I call your name, please, we turned it on.
They're not here.
I'm sorry?
So these are staff that aren't here, but we can talk about them.
All right. We'll get to them. So if I call your name up, please come up. If someone from CNS Waste Solutions is here. Cheryl Almond. Catherine Miller. Amberlin Weiss. And Aubrey Weiss. And then we had three staff members who also supported this. Amy Avella, Mark Roberts, and Daya Lopez. Director Veramontes.
So on December 2nd, we had our second breakfast with Santa, and it was, it went off very well. Couple of people, all these people helped me. I would not have been able to do it by myself. CNS Waste sponsored the event, so that was quite helpful. Thank you so much. And Amberlin and Aubrey helped with Santa. They were my elves.
So we'd like to hand these out to all of you. Again, thank you so much. These events mean so much to the city. It may seem like just a fun thing to do sometimes, but you're impacting the lives of our children and hopefully future leaders. So, for CNS, thank you for being a wonderful sponsor of the event.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You want to give a quick plug while I walk back up on any other future recreation events?
We have a lot of future recreation events. Actually, I have a presentation.
Yay.
Good evening. How are you? So, over the last year, the Recreation Department has not only created many events for the community, but the department has made many connections and partnerships, some like what we just spoke about with CNS Waste. The department has also met and exceeded many of the goals that were set when the department was first talked about being created. This year in November, we had our 2023 Flag Lowering, and every year, we have a guest veteran speaker, and this year was our very own Public Works Parks Foreman, Adam Hernandez. This year, like we talked about, breakfast with Santa was very, went off very well. We had about 35 children that were fed and greeted by Santa. They all received gifts. Most were donated by either Amy Avila or Cheryl Almond this year. The Christmas Parade had actually gotten bigger this year. I counted about 21 participants, and as you can see in this photo, many of our vehicles were police staff. Clearlake PD, code enforcement, the animal services. I was in the parade as well. Over the last couple of months, the youth center has gotten fresh exterior paint, several remodel upgrades, has all-new appliances in our kitchen, and we are starting to have paid events there. We're also going to hold bingo nights and the bunny brunch coming within the next couple of months. This photo here just represents how much these concerts mean to the community. In late August, we had Color Me Bad and Tone Loc, and this concert turned out better than I had hoped, and I prayed it would go off well, otherwise I would not be allowed to do it anymore. And it went very well, and as you can see here, we had quite a crowd. It was probably as big as our Fourth of July event.
Wow.
So, I talk about all of the positive things. I also am realistic, and I know that I have, or the department has areas of growth. So, some of the things that I've, I've touched on is enhance the current events and find more and better ways to advertise. I need to, we need to obtain a more solid team of volunteers, create more positive revenue, expand the current partnerships, and also find new partnerships and sponsorships. And finally, education, budgeting, sustainability, management of projects and employees, and the more we can educate not only myself and the community, I think that would be better in the long run for the department. How do we get there? Well, more grant applications and funding, more community outreach, and again, continued education for both the department and the community. In summary, the Recreation Department has set the foundation for what it can do in the community, but I feel like we've only scratched the surface of what this department can become. That's it. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them.
Any questions from council members?
Just want to say you've done a great job. Thank you so much.
I do have one question. Does the city have a policy around our Recreation Director crowd surfing at a concert?
No, and don't give him any ideas.
We're gonna have to put an audience together. All right. Thank you, Director.
So, you know, we, we started this department with basically two toothpicks and a rubber band, and it's, it's pretty awesome what's come together over the last year, particularly, you know, with probably the most difficult year of Tina's life personally, and so it just makes me proud that she's been able to do this.
Well done. All right. We will move on now to public comment. This is a time for any member of the public to address the city council on any matter that is not on the agenda and that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the city, the council, or staff to discuss the issue brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take action under public comment, and we already have a few requests, so we'll be limiting public comment to three minutes for each participant. So I'd like to call the folks who submitted cards first. Christina St. Clair. You here?
My name is Christina St. Clair, and I am here specifically to ask all of you that gave six months to North Bay Animal Services to clear the warehouse, and I'm wondering what, if anything, has been done, because we as a community haven't heard squat. And I know darn well that there are dogs still packed in that warehouse. That's it. Can you hear me now? Okay. I had asked them to give an update. They gave North Bay Animal Services over six months ago, six months, to empty that warehouse that is filled with dogs, and we haven't heard anything? And that's what I am asking about, because I know there's dogs still packed in that warehouse, and we're fed up.
Thank you. We have a couple of comments regarding animal control, so let's go through those, and then we'll, we'll check in with city staff here. Elaine Sommet.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Welcome. If you could start off, just state your name.
My name is Elaine Sommet. We're here about the same old issue we always come about, which is animal care and control. We have experienced quite a lot of criticism, complaints. One, one lady threatened to slap that old lady, Rita, you know, and these folks are not even from Clearlake. I don't understand why we can't have two animal rescues in a county like Lake County, but for some reason, they're interfering with our business, and we're just raising money with Mark Scott for our local animal control. So I don't understand why a different organization is vilifying us and interfering with our business and making threats. My goodness, is what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Rita, and we opened up a lovely store for, for the animals, and we've had nothing but problems since we've opened it. First of all, people are saying, well, this group is saying not to come in and buy things. All the money that we make goes for animal control, and this is an example. We adopted out 47 dogs in December, and we paid for those dues that had to be paid. Okay? We paid for the chips. We, I mean, the chips that we're gonna be putting in. We gave the shots. We've been bringing blankets and everything. All these people, you cannot believe the terrible things that they said about me, just terrible, and they don't even know me. And you know, if they were really animal lovers, they'd say, let's sit down. they'd say, let's sit down and let's get to the bottom of all this. But it's not that way at all. And it's really terrible. And like I said, we worked. If you guys, I don't know how many have gone in, but this store is lovely, and we're making money, and it's all going to the animals. And we're gonna be Spain before we know it. And I'm gonna be working with Joyce. And she knows. We're gonna be doing a whole lot of things, and it's not right. And if you guys looked on that lost dogs, what is it, found dogs? You should see the things that they said. And I don't even know these people. Terrible things. And this one, I'm gonna mention her name because I really don't care. Her name's Karen Braider. First of all, she called me terrible things. And if she sees me, she's gonna slap me. You know, I don't understand. What kind of people are we living among? You know, that you can't sit down and discuss things? And when it comes to animals, those are not animal lovers. Because if they were so worried about our animal control, why don't they go down there and help? Why don't they volunteer? Because those girls are really working hard to get this place together. Do you understand? And we're gonna fix it up nice. We're gonna put plants. We're gonna put pots and everything. And we're gonna have, we're gonna have a lot of events to raise money for senior citizens and for the public. And like I said, you know, when I read all that stuff, I thought, I opened Animal Coalition in 2002, and we got so many animals fixed. We used to give food. We used to do all kinds of things. And we never had anything like this, ever. And I just don't understand what kind. I mean, these are, these are not people that care about animals. And if you could see, there's like three pages. Three pages. And it's not right. It's not right at all. And I don't know what to do about it. And telling people, this one lady came in. She says, you know, they told, they're saying that we shouldn't come into the store. They don't even know what the store is about. The store is a lovely secondhand store with beautiful articles that we have. And we're selling it. And everything that we make goes towards the animals. And it's a disgrace to think that we've got. And first of all, this is another thing. Why do we have all these people that don't even live in our city come over here and tell us how to run the city? I don't understand that one either. Because we, you know, if we get enough people in here, we could start taking care of things the way they're supposed to be. Like I said, I've been doing this since I was 19, and I'm gonna be 83. And, you know, and I know what I'm doing. So when you've got a bunch of people that write all this, all this time you spend to attack someone instead of saying, gee, let's get together and work to accomplish these things. And I don't know what else to say because I was gonna say a lot more, but I'm gonna start to cry. So I gotta go and sit down.
Thank you, Rita.
You're welcome.
I don't have a last name on here, but Kathleen.
Hi, my name is, is this on?
It is, yep.
My name is Kathy, and I work with Rita. And the last couple of weeks have been hell. And I've heard some comments lately. And one that the city doesn't like us and that they've been saying horrible things about us. And I don't, I don't understand. I'm a trapper. And when somebody calls me, I go and trap. I get the cats fixed. I take, you know, spend all day waiting for them to get fixed. I live and breathe. I mean, it's 24 hours a day I've had. I get two hours of sleep a night. You know, I take care of every cat I can find, you know, and stuff. And I take care of all the animals that I could possibly. I'm so in debt, it's not even funny anymore. And I don't understand why they're talking about Rita the way they are. And we're about ready to, at some point, pull and just leave and let everybody just fend for themselves. Because it's horrible when people are talking behind your back, and they're saying the city doesn't even like you, that they're talking behind your back, that you're, you know, you're, they said that we're just, that we're laughable and stuff. And, you know, when Rita called me and stuff, because I used to be a board member. And when Rita called me, and she goes, hey, listen, we got a chance. I'm coming back. Will you come with me? You betcha. Right there with you, you know, and stuff. But it's just been a nightmare ever since we've come back. It's, you know, people stabbing each other in the back. And this person talking about that person. And I don't care if you like North Bay or don't, you know, you like them or don't like them. They're here to stay for right now, and we gotta work with them. And those girls down there, they're, they're, they are unbelievable. Because I used to work in shelters. And the first three to four hours, when you first come in in the morning, it's unbelievable because dogs have been urinating and pottying, and somebody might be sick and throwing up. And the place is a mess. I mean, you come in, and you're, the first three or four hours, you're running around trying to get dogs and cats to where they need to be so you can clean up their area. And it's not that easy and stuff. And for people to sit there, if they have that much time to be stabbing people in the back and saying things, they want to get off their bed, go down there and help those girls, you know, and stuff, and see how hard it is. Because it is not easy. I've done it. You know, I'm 62 years old and stuff. I've been doing this most of my life and stuff. I love animals. I love them and stuff. I don't even have to stay home anymore and stuff. So I'm just here to say that I hope you guys will support us. Joyce is, we're gonna join with Joyce, and she's, you know, she's amazing and stuff. And we're gonna work together, and we're gonna get this done.
Thank you, Kathy. So that was our last submitted comment. If you have, wanna take three minutes and make a comment, please come up to the microphone. Come on up.
Hi, good evening.
Could you start with your name?
My name is Jim Hackett.
Thank you.
And I'm a resident of Clear Lake. I do volunteer work with Rita. I do volunteer work with Joyce. And I think that North Bay is doing a good job. It's had a hard road to hack. And I think we're going in the right direction with it. Okay, we're getting things done. Okay, these people that come in at 8:00 in the morning when the animal control officers get there, I believe is unfair. Yeah, I think there needs, if they wanna go investigate, fine, 11:00 when the public's allowed in. As opposed to five minutes before the clerk gets there or the animal control officer gets there that is going to be cleaning up over the last eight hours. Because we don't have 24-hour care. Yeah, I think that number becomes skewed. And I think that's something that we, as community members in the city, need to address and put down rules. That, you know, no one goes in and demands to see five minutes after they walked in. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Anyone else in the room? All right, if not, city clerk, anyone on Zoom?
There are three hands raised on Zoom.
All right.
So we'll start with, excuse me, Jim Conley.
Hi, Jim. Please go ahead.
Council, I was gonna speak tonight and ask that you consider drafting a resolution to dedicate June 8th as honor, an honorary day to commemorate the survivors of the USS Liberty attack. That was the time when Israel attacked one of our Navy ships, killing 34 American servicemen, wounding 174. I think they deserve a day dedicated to them. Some of the quotes from some of the survivors, "Two hours of pure hell. It was no accident. There was no mistaking who we were. It was divine intervention that the ship stayed afloat. It was absolutely a deliberate attack. Congress just looked the other way." There's a documentary on it. If you need more details to draft the resolution at justiceforliberty.org. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you have a recommendation, feel free to submit that to City Clerk Swanson, and then the city will review.
Appreciate your feedback.
There is one further person on Zoom who wishes to speak. Mitzi Beth.
Mitzi, go ahead.
We can hear you.
Fantastic. My name is Mitzi Bape. I live in Clear Lake. And today, I'd like to bring to the forefront of everyone's mind that January is human, is our National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. This is a very important topic to me, and therefore a very important month. I work for a nonprofit that helps folks living with diseases such as AIDS and HIV. We mostly help allocate donated funds to help people who cannot afford life-extending medication that they need. A lot of the people we help were previously trafficked, most of which are middle-aged. And in a sense, that's a blessing since, A, they made it through their traumatic younger years, but B, because a younger youth immune system is much more fragile. Recently, though, I've noticed an increase of minors coming to our Foundation for Assistance. One little boy in particular has really touched my heart. Now, I asked his parents if I could talk about him today, and Mr. and Mrs. Goldberg have graciously given me permission to speak about him. So today, with great pleasure, I'd like to tell you about little Benny. Ben is six years old, and it's a miracle that he's lived this long. Ben is living with full-blown AIDS. My first question when Mr. and Mrs. Goldberg came to us, I mean, they didn't need our services. So I asked them how this could possibly be the case. And I was hoping that it was some sort of freak accident, maybe a tainted blood transfusion. But as I asked, their heads dropped as they begin to describe a horrific event, a ritualistic ceremony involving their, at the time, eight-day-old infant. Surrounded by his family and their friends, held by his rabbi, little Benny had his genitals mutilated and was then orally molested by his rabbi. His life forever changed. As I asked if the monster who did that to him was in prison, I was told that it was completely legal. I questioned why that was. And the only reason we found is that our country is ran by a mafia of Jewish pedophiles. Thank you for letting me speak today.
All right, city clerk. Are there any other comments on Zoom? Are any of the hands raised?
No further hands raised.
Thank you. All right, at this point, we'll close off public comment. City Manager of the floor, I know we covered a wide range of topics. If you have any brief comments?
Well, yeah, I'll be ignoring most of the comments. But a couple of things. So there was a question about sort of the warehouse area at the kennel. Perhaps there was a little bit of confusion. The city didn't give a timeline of six months for that to be removed. We were actually hoping that all the animals would be moved out of there sooner than six months. But just with the population demands that's been on a, we haven't been able to accomplish that. However, the population in the shelter is down over 40% from what it was at that time. So we're continuing to push and try to make some progress there. It's a much different situation in the warehouse than it was six months ago. You know, I guess I would just make a couple of brief comments. There's some comments made about the city doesn't like us. I tried to spend almost no time on Facebook. And I think it seems like maybe there should be a little bit more of that because there's just often not fruitful conversation there. So I don't know what was being referred to as far as the city doesn't like us. I would just say that, you know, I can speak for myself, and I believe the staff that I'm aware of, and assuming this is involved Rita and Kathy and your group, we're very appreciative of the work that you're doing for the animals in our community. And so that's all I got.
Thank you, City Manager. All right, wrapping up public comment here, we will move to the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council want to pull an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Kramer, a second from Councilmember Perdok. Please vote yea or nay on your portal.
Hi. Hi.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Onto item number 10, a discussion and consideration of the contracts related to the preparation of environmental review for the Clear Lake Airport redevelopment project. City Manager of the floor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council members. So, you know, this moment has been a long time coming. And, you know, we're still not there yet, but we're making some actual progress. And I tried to provide a fair amount of detail in the staff report. I don't know that I need to go through all of that. I think the council is pretty familiar with it. But so there's, there's three contracts before you. The recommended action involves taking action on all three of those contracts. And so this would create a pretty comprehensive team to deal with some design work, creating design standards, some preliminary engineering work on water, sewer, stormwater drainage, that type of thing in order to work through the environmental review process. And so you're familiar with Mr. Price. And, you know, he's worked on our general plan, general planning I R's, and works with the city on a number of special projects. And he has agreed to help us on this one. And we think the team that's been put together is gonna get us where we need to be as quickly as we can get there and as thorough analysis as necessary. So maybe I'll just leave it at that. Unless you have specific questions, we just recommend the council approve these three contracts and so we can get rolling.
Thank you, City Manager. Any questions from the council?
I have some comments, but I'll defer.
Do you have a question? Okay. All right, seeing no questions from the council. Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Oh, I'm sorry, city clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on the Zoom.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council.
If I may.
Yes, please.
Obviously, this is a very important step, the most important step. I mean, I know that the city has tried to develop this in the past, and it hit all kinds of roadblocks because of not taking a full environmental review on this project. This time, I think we're doing it the right way. It might take a little, you know, it's expensive to do this, but it will protect us in the future from frivolous lawsuits that we didn't comply with CEQA process. This will protect us from that. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none, I will accept a motion.
I move that we approve the waif competitive bidding requirements and approve the contracts with Gary Price Consulting, California Engineering Company, and LSW Architect and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Slaton, a second from Councilmember Kramer. All those in favor, please vote yea or nay in the portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item 11, a review and review and approve the submittal of the fiscal year 2024, 2025 ropes for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Director Wells.
Just before Director Wells jumps in, I just want to make the clarification that for this action, the City Council will be sitting as the Board of Directors for the successor agency to the Clear Lake Redevelopment Agency.
Thank you, City Manager.
Mayor Claffey and council members,
Mayor Claffey and council members, every year the council, sitting as the successor agency for the former Clear Lake Redevelopment Agency, is required to approve a ROPS, or Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, as a part of the wind down of the former redevelopment agency. We're asking the council approve the ROPS for the 2425 fiscal year. With your approval, it will be presented to the Lake County Oversight Board on January 25th for approval, and then submitted to the State Department of Finance by February 1st. The expenses on the 2425 schedule are consistent with prior year expenses, the largest being the annual bond payment for the bonds issued by the redevelopment agency with approximately $12.5 million outstanding. We recommend the council approve the ROPS, and I'll try to address any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Wells. Any questions from council? Seeing none, any questions or any public comment? Madam Clerk, anyone have their hand raised on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on the Zoom.
All right, I'll bring it back to council.
I move that we approve the submittal of the fiscal year.
I want to move that we approve the submittal of the fiscal year 2425 ROPS for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, as presented by the Director of Finance.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Slaton, a second from Councilmember Perdok. All those in favor, please enter your vote in the portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the board.
Thank you, city clerk. All right, moving on to item I, city manager and council members' report. City manager floor.
Just a few brief updates. Yesterday, Lafco, I guess I'm stealing Councilmember Slaton's stuff. Maybe I should, I'll just skip that one. We, the Burns Valley Sports Complex Committee met yesterday and worked through some phasing options that were requested by council. And so we have a little bit of direction to come back with a few things. And I just wanted to let the council know that we're working on that. I guess I would just say that we, we need to refine this, but there was a preliminary option for phasing part of the project, getting the infrastructure in and some of the ball fields and whatnot, up and going for what is estimated to be $11.5 million, which is something which appears to be within striking distance. Now, there's some work we need to do that, but I just wanted to share that that was something that was brought up, and I wasn't expecting would be too feasible. But we did, we did find some ways that we might be able to make that work. So continuing to work on extra funding and all that stuff, of course, but making a little bit of progress. I just got an email today related to the Clear Lake Courthouse. I think I mentioned before that, interestingly enough, it's number six on the state priority list for replacement or renovation, although the Lake County Courthouse and Lake Board is number one on the list. And I had tried to get some planning to happen on that a couple of years ago, and they said they wouldn't talk about two projects in the same county at the same time, which, you know, doesn't seem very wise. But nonetheless, they are starting to talk about it a little bit now. And at this time, they are not willing to commit to enough funding for a full replacement project. And so they are asking for options for lease of city facilities, which we don't have anything that would work for them, or renovation at the existing site. So I just want to let you know, probably have a few continuing discussions with the court CEO over that. And then the final thing, which I just saw some news about today, you know, housing and homeownership is always an important thing. So last year, the state started a program called California Dream For All, which is a first-time homebuyer program, and provided a pretty significant amount of money for homebuyers to get into, to a house. And they had $300 million that was allocated. And all of that money was, I guess, used up in about 11 days after they released the program. So they have another program that's coming out this year, $250 million, which is available. This year, they're doing a lottery program, so it's not first come, first served. Application, they'll begin accepting applications in April. And so just wanted to kind of start getting the word out. We'll start sharing that, maybe our newsletter and some other things. So I believe folks can already go in and try to get some medical assistance and get their application prepared if it's something they want to take advantage of. But it's a pretty large amount. I think the, my brief reading of the program, I mean, applicants are eligible for like up to $150,000. So it's, you know, one of the larger individual programs like that that we've seen, so. California Dream For All, if you're just to Google it, there's a website. And yeah, it's the same, same name. So with that, that's my report.
Thank you, city manager. Councilmember Kramer.
On the other end, everyone's lying out.
Well, I give you time to think about what your redo's gonna be. So we'll start with you.
Well, last week wasn't very busy. This week, though, has been. We've had a couple of committee meetings earlier this week. One of them being the, the sports complex ad hoc committee. And I think you discussed that a little bit. And another one being the water ad hoc committee on Tuesday. And then Tuesday night, we had a candidates forum for District One candidates, right here in this room. It's also been recorded and is available for viewing on Peg TV, YouTube, rather, on the Peg TV showing of it, that Thomas DeWalt recorded, did a great job for us. So I would encourage you to take a look at it, because the questions were more tuned towards both Lower Lake and Clear Lake, and of District One. That's what I have. And I will not be having any redos.
Councilmember Perdok.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Slaton.
I attended a Burns Valley Sports Complex meeting also, and I think Councilmember Kramer referred to that, and the city manager did. I did attend the Lafco meeting yesterday, in which we whittled down the amount of water districts in the city from five to three. Particularly the Cache Creek, damn road area during the fire. We, we, there was some water district that had just little, one private and then one from Lower Lake that are now all part of Conacta Water District. Also, the Lafco had a meeting, and it had to do with the Lake County Fire Protection District from seven to five members. It was approved as part of the process that, that was started some time ago. And the executive director, executive officer, Mr. John Manow, is retiring at the end of the, his term. And I'm part of the committee to find a replacement for him. It's one of those jobs that is kind of tricky, because you have to know Lafco law pretty well and zoning and all that kind of stuff. So anybody that can direct me to somebody that knows that kind of stuff, please let me know. That's it.
Vice Mayor Overton.
I don't really have anything to, you know, report on, but I would like to announce that, as everybody kind of heard through the things, that our senior center has started a POS program. So for seniors, so you have to be 60 or older. It is not yet. We're collecting money to try to open, open it up more to the public. That's where Rita's been helping me too. So, you know, so I just kind of want to put it out there, because we're starting to gather a list of people that need services. We provide dog food, grooming, different things. A little bit of money there for some surgeries, but we already did one. So I'm not sure how much money's left over for that type of thing. But, you know, if somebody needs help with their animal that's 60 or older, they can contact the senior center, and we'll try to, you know, move them into our program. So I think it's gonna be a good thing if we can all work together. And everybody put their personal things aside. I think that if all the groups would actually really come together, I think we could really do a lot for our community if we can actually get this all put together and, and working all these programs together. So I really hope that people really do want to do, you know, you know, put the personal sides, things together, and, and just come together as a group to do something for our, our community and help get these animals taken care of. You know, so we're, so we're, right now, we're looking for seniors. You know, we're, we're going out to like three or four months span, because we're working with the SBCA. So we actually started doing that last month, or last week. And we're gonna continue on for, at least through January. Right now, we've kind of already got enough through schedule for, for that. But, you know, if people need that help, they need to contact us so that we can get them on our list. And also, we can help with animal food, so, or cat litter, or stuff like that, collars, you know, any supplies they need, even toys, believe it or not. So, so, yeah, so just have them give us a call at the senior center. And that number is 707-994-3051. And just ask, pretty much, we have, just anybody there can help them get on the list.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I had the pleasure this week, along with our city manager and supervisor Sabatier, our police leadership, to attend the Celebration of Martin Luther King event over at the United Methodist Church. It's the 10th year of doing unity through community. Wonderful event, good music, good conversation. Thank you all for, for coming out to that. We had a visit Lake County meeting earlier in the month. This is the first period where we'll start building budgets and media plans around the increased TID pass-through. So, you know, hopefully a lot of positive output from there. The replacement for the Destinations Magazine is well underway. I think that the window is closed for companies, businesses to advertise in that. They're, they're going through design and printing now, and that should be hopefully out and about for this upcoming summer season. The forum that we had here, Councilmember Kramer, thank you so much for putting that together. I just want to make it really clear, District One does have a good chunk of Clear Lake. And this, we have five candidates who are very strong. It's a great opportunity to get your voice heard at the county level. Come to these forums. I think that's the last one here, but there's a few one, a few more throughout District One. Watch the YouTube presentation. It was really a great forum, some good questions. And really asking you to, to press our, our potential candidates to, to think about Clear Lake a bit more. And that is it for me.
You're welcome.
We knew one was coming. Councilmember Slaton.
Next month's, February, at the judge's breakfast, we have all the candidates running for all the different offices, including the sheriff, including the two judges for, is that Department Four, I believe? I could be wrong. Anyway, and also all the supervisors' districts, one, four, and five. All of them are gonna come down to the judge's breakfast, which is at 7:00 in the morning at the Masonic Hall. Please come. And the senior center serves them, so that's all.
Thank you.
Breakfast is $15.
Let us know that it's not free.
All right, any future agenda items? All right, seeing none. Anything else, city manager? We are adjourned.